Okay, we're going to get started. First thing up tonight, we have public hearing number two in reference to the help grant, December 12th, 2023. This public hearing is now called order.
You want me to start?
Yep.
I just need to read a couple items for the record. I am Neil Brook and I am a certified grant administrator with Klein Peter Consulting Group. Notice of this public hearing was posted in the Western Wayne News on November 29th, 2023. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss the application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We are applying specifically for the water construction grant in the amount of $550,000, contributing $55,000 in ARPA funds. We want to make sure that citizens are fully informed and have the opportunity to voice any concerns or support for the project and ask any questions they may have. The good news is the county has already been awarded the help grant. We just have to go through the formal application process. We are planning to submit the application on January 19th. Are you Tom?
I am.
Tom, I'm ready to turn the meeting over to you. Are you ready?
Sorry, I apologize. I got pulled over right now. We were still. It's all good, though.
I went through my deal. You can just explain the grant quickly again.
Yeah. Like I said, we're seeking the funds from the county, which will help pay for some metering done around town, some well work done out at the plants, some security upgrades. And trying to think if there's one more thing.
Hydrants and valves.
Hydrants and valves, thank you. So those four things will all fit within the amount that the county and Okra is graciously going to give us with that. Not a lot to the project. Pretty straightforward.
Any questions?
When's the deadline to get the letters in from the community in support of?
The applications due the 20, when did I say, the 23rd? So maybe?
If you, yeah, if you have more.
I mean, do we have enough now?
Lenny and I went door to door, or Lenny went door to door, and so we have quite a few.
Okay, so we're good.
But if we're good, if you have some or know of somebody else that would like to reach out and do that, they're more than welcome to.
As long as we get them to Mike.
Yeah.
Maybe the first week of January.
Okay, great.
Anybody else have any questions?
Is it this time you'd want the resolution passed in?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, we do.
Have reviewed it, and basically if you are wanting to commit $55,000 from ARPA, as you have talked about being contention, that you would spend that contention on receiving the help funding, then this resolution would be in proper order.
That would be the resolution authorizing application submission, R9-2023.
I'll move that we accept resolution number R9-2023 for the resolution authorizing application submission and local match commitment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone else have any comments on the public hearing? Close the?
When will this thing get into, go into effect or start, will they start doing any of the work, doing any of whatever they're going to do first?
Well, we have to actually submit the application. How long does the application process?
On this one, I'm not sure, but generally after approval. I think we're about six months. We had to do a bunch of things, but six months before we can start construction.
We've got approval for the county's share and our share, but we actually have to go through grant applications, just like we're doing with the other grant.
I thought we'd already done all that.
It's, no.
I thought we'd already applied for all that grant stuff.
No, it's a, it's a long process.
Oh, I got it.
But we're getting there.
Man, another job well done.
All right.
Close the public hearing?
If there are any more question, if there aren't any more questions, we're going to go ahead and close the public meeting. All right.
And do you have any comments on the other grant?
I'd not.
Still waiting on?
Still waiting.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I can make a couple, I can make a couple updates just from these comments we've received back as a company from USDA, not specifically about this job or this, this project. Basically USDA right now is going to focus on the applications that they have in hand is what they've told us. So that meaning that anything that new that comes in, which we would still be considered a new project because they never really accepted our last one, is we'll have to go to national point, and that's all that means. So we'll have to wait for the states, they got their money in October, and then once they've allocated all those funds, the states that don't use all their allocations will go back to national office, and national office will decide on those projects. So it's just a little bit longer of a process. So I'm very, very grateful that the county approached us to at least get the ball moving on this project, because if not, we might just be scared.
When was the application submitted?
When was the application submitted? We sent the PER environmental to USDA in, I want to say probably March, and we've never given, they've never, the state's never approved our PER or environmental to this point. So we're still waiting on Laura, who's our point of contact there, to give us the go ahead.
How often are you following up with this?
The last time I heard from Laura was probably about three weeks ago. So pretty much every time that I have a call with her, I'm chomping at the bit with her.
It seems like this process has been a lot longer than what was told to us in the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the middle, and now even towards the end. And, you know, I would really hate to see it stretched out for years, and we're approaching that now.
Same. I don't disagree with that. I, I wish I could give you a better answer. It's, you know, two years ago when we were down this path, USDA operated under a different set of prin, I don't want to say different set of principles, but they operated, operated under, you know, they were the, they were the, the main funding agency for towns under 10,000 in economically distressed areas with median household incomes under a certain threshold. They were the, they were the game in town. Then we had the passing of the bipartisan infrastructure law, or the bill funds that came to the state. That's what influx SRF with all the money. And now SRF has all the money. That reduces what USDA has. So it's just been kind of a shuffling of who's, who has the money and where's the best place to put some of these projects. That being said, you know, we've talked in the past about an asset management plan. That's our one barrier of entry to SRF. The town currently doesn't have an asset management plan for the water utility. So until, until that's put in place, or we at least get some, some conversation going on, on starting one, you know, the state's, the state's not an option for us. USDA is our only.
If I remember right, that was quite costly.
It is, it is. It was. I would say our piece, because there's not just a, an engineering part to it, there's also a financial component. So once we get our portion, then, you know, Klein Peter or Baker Tilly, or whoever you guys use as your financial consultants, they would also come in and have a fee to basically take everything that we've done, put a numerical value to it, and then say this is what the entire asset's worth. And that number would shock you a little bit because you wouldn't think that utility's worth that much.
So I thought that we had already started on that at one time. Did we not get a rate study done for?
This isn't a rate study. We did reach out to.
But wouldn't it work hand in hand with that?
It will.
Yeah.
Yes, because with, no matter, no matter what grant opportunity we use, that government agency is going to come back and they're saying, because we're giving you millions of dollars, you have to prove that your, you can, your utility can sustain. So your utilities rates will have to be between here and here. So it is something, and we did talk about reaching out to Baker Tilly, and yes, they're waiting on the go ahead for them to start that part, but we're not, we're not there yet. But they were made aware of it, because at that time, we will have to do a federal audit and some other stuff for that. But yes, we did talk about it.
Yeah, and then also Pam, I, I know that it's probably been about two months since I talked to Mike about asking if the commissioners were going to forgive the, the loan that they gave to the town as, as part of this. So I'm not sure if the town's heard, Julie, have you heard anything about that recently from the commissioners?
For the?
For the planning study, the 30,000 that they loaned.
We already have that.
They gave it back to you?
Yes.
Did they free that?
Um, well, it is, they gave it back to us.
Perfect.
With, as part of all of this ARP.
Okay.
Stuff. They, he was, Jeff was waiting to get approval from his board to say, we will give it free and clear back to you as long as you put it towards this project.
Okay.
And I told him that that was the initial plan to begin with, so there shouldn't be a problem with that.
Yeah.
And so that's what he took back to his board.
Yeah, that was in October.
I knew that that was, that, I mean, I, I, probably about the last time I talked to Mike or Jeff about that. So, you know, that might be, if, if the town would bless it, that might be a way of kind of mitigating that asset management plan component to submitting to SRF. Because we already have the preliminary engineer reports done. If, if we had the asset management plan piece in, in place, you know, we'd be ready to submit March 31st, when the state opens up for their, for their project priority list.
The slowest things go, we wouldn't have that done in three days.
Well, fortunately for the state, they want, it's, you have to be under, it has to be, and, and you have to be doing it. You can't have.
In the process of.
Yeah. It doesn't, they prefer it be, to be completed, but if, if that's the one thing that's holding you back from submitting, that, you know, they're going to be okay with it. They just don't want to, you know, when you check the box of, do you have an asset management, does utility have an asset management plan? It's a yes or a no. It's not a, well, we have such, you know, if we have one working, then yes, technically we, we're understanding what the asset is, you know, what it's comprised of and what its value is. So at that point, we can give them a firm yes, because by the time we get to closing, it already be, it would be done. So outside of that, you know, we'd have to check no, so.
So the portion that you're talking about that goes out of house besides the Bakerfield Tilly, what was the estimated cost on that?
I'd have to look. I, I'd want to talk with, I'd want to talk with Rob, the engineer, first, because since we've already studied the utility, I'd hate to give you a number, and it'd be wrong, because we've already studied the utility. You know, I don't, I don't know what additional we'd have to put into it. Yeah, I can have Rob certainly send you a number tomorrow and.
So that wasn't part of the initial cost that we paid you?
No, that was just for the planning grant. That was for the preliminary engineer report and the environmental report. So, because when you get into the asset management plan, you're really, you're looking at the full utility, you know, which we did, I mean, you're looking at, I'm talking about, you're putting a value in an operational life to, you know, service trucks. You're, you're talking about an operational and, and value to the, to the treatment facility as well, to the, the actual structure, all the components inside of it, the land. I mean, all of that is considered to be utility. Any, any room that, that Lenny and his team have, if they have anything here in this building, that's part of the water department, you know, that, that's all included in there. So you're looking, you're not looking at, you're not looking at lifespans per se. I mean, you are in the sense of you're putting a numerical value to it, not really an operational lifespan. And then you're also looking at, you know, coming up with lines in the ground, how long have they been out in? How, well, you know, what, how much does that now, is that value that, you know, as, as a part of, of the utility? So it's, it's just different. It's, a lot of the, the work is the same, but you're taking a different approach to it. So we're looking, you know, we're looking at all the same stuff. It's just now we're, we're going to say, instead of this pump being 27 years old, and it's got a 20-year lifespan, it needs to be replaced, we're saying this pump is 27 years old, here's what the value of it is at 27 years old, depreciated, and then here's what it would cost to replace this exact same pump. No recommendations on its usefulness, its exact, or, you know, upgraded version, it would just be if we put that exact same pump back in, how much would it be worth, kind of thing? If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So I can have Rob send the number to you in the morning for that, and we'll go from.
And then I will still need to get something from Baker Tilly on their portion.
Their portion is different. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not a financial.
Right.
Municipal financial advisor, so I know they, they have a component to it. They're usually about, usually about half of what, you know, because they do all the numbers, it's not really a, a lot of field work and stuff like that.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, we're going to move on from the public hearing to our regular board meeting, December 12th, 2023. I have a rule call, please.
Nathan Ulrich, present.
Pam Chaney, present.
Gene Gavin, present.
Bruce Malls, present. First up, 285 South State Street.
This is actually a public hearing too. This is a hearing that's been required because of sending them a letter of the declaration that it was an unsafe building at 285 State Street. You recall, this is a step up from just having it deblighted. It's now been deemed unsafe with a letter sent to them. Because the remedy that you're asking for was total removal of the building, state code requires this hearing. Generally, if you're just asking for a fix it, you only have a hearing if the property owner requests it, but when you're at that severe of a remedy, you have to have a hearing regardless of whether the owner requests it or not. So that's what this hearing is set for tonight. They were notified of this hearing, and since I don't see anybody from there, it appears, once again, they have not shown up. That does not take away from the fact that you can still proceed with your hearing, and what you're doing now is just considering the letter that your department head sent out to them, declaring it unsafe, and you can either affirm that order with the removal remedy as part of that, you can rescind the order if there was some reason for that, or you can modify the order, but you can still go forward with that at this point. Depending on what you do, if you do affirm it, which I'm guessing is going to be your action, then we send them one more notice. They have a 30-day period to appeal this to the courts. If they appeal it to the court, then the court will actually have a hearing on it. That's what happened with the Schroeder building, of course. He did appeal your order of an unsafe building. Absent that appeal, then this town can go ahead and on its own, use self-help to do what you are asking them to do, which is removing the building. Of course, that would be at your cost. If the projected cost is under $10,000, you can do it with your own personnel. If it's more than 10,000, you have to put it out for bids and give to the lowest, most responsible bidder to do that removal. You would then hope that you can re, get your costs reimbursed, and that may or may not be the case, as later on in the meeting, we'll give some final figures on Schroeder, but at least that's a procedure going forward. And so I think the first thing would be, do you want to affirm, rescind, or modify the order? Then we can talk about what steps to take from this point on.
So you need a motion to go forward?
Yeah.
Well, a motion to affirm the order.
Right.
The order that your superintendent.
Now, if we move forward with this, how's this going to be affected with that, with the BLIT grant? If we move forward with this, then that would probably make it ineligible for the BLIT grant?
Shouldn't, no.
I don't think that would.
That, and we just talked to her today, and I let her know where we were at with that. And basically what she said was, they are just starting that program, and they wanted a list of properties that we had concerns about and what, what kind of demo that we were talking, if it, if it went to that. And they had two options. One, they could give us the funding so that we could get the quotes and we could have it done and manage it, or they could acquire the property and try it in a different manner, which would take longer, because they would go through that. So it should work hand in hand, basically, and give us funding to be able to do it.
I would definitely think this first step of just declaring it an unsafe building, right now it's been declared by your department head, by act, by council, affirming that you're declaring it as unsafe. I don't think that one's going to be problematic at all. You are now confirmed that's an unsafe building. What the next step would be, and we actually went through this Cambridge City the same last night, and what they chose to do is during this 30-day period, while they would be waiting to see if they appeal it, was going ahead and at least getting bids to see what the demolition would be. That doesn't cost you anything, you'll find out what the cost would be, and then table what you may want to do and whether you want to go forward, that also gives some time on this BLIT thing.
Yeah, sounds like it.
So I think the first action would be to affirm the order if that's what you choose.
And with this, after we get through the public hearing tonight, can we get on the property and at least board it up, or do we have to wait through all these public hearings?
You can't do your self-help until you give them the chance to appeal the order.
Okay, okay.
Then you, then you can.
Okay.
And you can self-help.
Even, even if it's just boarding it?
Yeah.
Does he, he have to respond to this letter before he can do anything?
No, no.
But he hasn't responded to any others, my understanding.
Nope, you, you sent it to the property address that is used for real estate taxes, so that is proper service on them. We will now, during this 30-day, I, as I told Cambridge last night, I, we'd like to do two, I want to go ahead and again, send your confirmation order to him certified mail, also publish it, so that there's no question that we've done everything possible for service. Then when he does not appeal that, then you can start your self-help, including the boarding.
You might have said this at one point, Bob, but do you know when the last time the taxes were paid and where that came from?
I don't know where it came from. That would not indicate it. It has not been, I think they may have missed one of the installments this year. It's not been enough missed to cause it to go to tax sale yet, but there has been one installment missed.
I just wonder if you could trace back to where that came from?
Well, we've tracked back this guy, I think I may have said at the last meeting, that was his last known residence is in Las Vegas, because remember, we were all out of meat out there.
Right.
So we need a motion to affirm?
Motion to affirm the order.
You still have a motion to affirm?
Motion to affirm. I have a second. A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, do you want to go ahead and ask somebody, Lenny or someone, to get bids on the dare deal?
Yes, oh, oh, I got that out there. And I'm assuming that, we talked about this last time, that we want everything cleaned up and out, we just don't want it dropped. We want everything cleaned up out of the basement and fresh dirt everywhere.
Smooth dirt, smooth, smooth landscape.
Clean environment.
Okay.
I'd seen Jerry last night at Walmart.
Okay.
And asking if you, if you had made contact with him yet, and he said, no. I said, he said he was still injured, so.
Okay.
He was still able to do it.
Okay, I was waiting on this here, so I will let, let him know that, that Jerry is, it would be one of them that we could contact for a quote.
Okay, we'll move on to minutes and adjustments.
Make a motion when you approve, that's presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
I did have one quick question about the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
When you're doing the minutes, it seems like there's missing components from the minutes, and I don't know why I've never noticed that before, maybe because I don't miss meetings, but the components that seems to be missing from the minutes, and you might make note of this for future minutes, is dollar amounts. There was something about the wages, a wage adjustment, but there wasn't a dollar amount of how much the wages were adjusted. And, of course, I don't have it in front of me right now.
The part-time help hours?
I think that's what it was.
Okay. Well, at that point, we did not have those. I do have those tonight, you should have a copy of those. The total was 11,842.50.
Okay, so that would be adjusting the wages for this year?
Yes, and I have a salary amendment to increase the original $7,800 to 11,842.50.
Okay, and then the other thing on that, and we might as well just go ahead and do that if Bruce doesn't mind, we'll just take care of that since we're talking about it, but is the, how did it get so far over? I mean, so was, I know that you were probably watching it.
I was, I was watching the hours. I dropped the ball on the 7,800 because I forgot there was, there was a dollar figure with it. And Lenny didn't remember being told that part, he just had the 20 hours a week in his, in his head, so.
So corrections been made, now they know to watch.
Yes, and, yes. And I have a.
We've got my, my guys included.
I have a new report, and thank you, because you're the one that brought that to my attention. I have a new report that I will include monthly, and Lenny will have that monthly, that will have a running total of the part-time person or the temporary person's wages.
Yes.
So that we have that. And I did let him know that we, our salary ordinance for next year is the same, so it's still the 20 hours per week for 26 weeks or 7,800 is what, what it was.
All right.
Um, while we're on that salary ordinance amendment that I did with that, the boys took it upon themselves, they were being nice, and the money that they had left over in their clothing allowance, because they bought winter CarHearts and hats, they took their combined total and purchased a Carhartt jacket for the temporary person. And can't be used that way, but what, what I put in here was that the labor one and the superintendent extended their excess clothing allowance for the year, the temporary person. They gave their excess, it should be excess, not extended, sorry. I was rushed on. Their excess portion of their clothing allowance in the amount of $108.52 to purchase a Carhartt coat and hat with the town logo for the temporary help.
Is that going to apply with your audit?
As long as it's in writing in here, yes.
Okay.
That's why I was busy, busy doing this. So I did have both of them sign something, so I also have something from Nick and Lenny both saying, yes, this is what we want to do, we did it out of the goodness of our heart, that's kind of their Christmas gift to him for all the hard work he did.
I mean, other than you physically knowing that they told you, I mean, how would we know any difference that they, what they're spending on?
Because I got a bill.
I mean, how do we know they're just not spending the rest of their money on their own clothing?
Because I got a bill that said Carhartt named Teddy.
Right, but if it didn't say that, I mean.
But I shouldn't have one employee that has two coats. I mean, if he wants to buy two coats, it's $400, they could do what they, you know, within reason, what they want with it. They can buy coats, hats, shirts, jeans, shoes.
As long as he's within his number figure.
He is, but my receipt, my invoice said Lenny, Nick, Teddy. And on the salary ordinance, it's under Nick and Lenny. There isn't anything under Teddy.
Okay, so you think that's a, that's. Okay, so you think that's a, this will cover that?
This will cover that, yes. So I need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Special ordinance.
Special ordinance.
Twenty twenty-three five.
Twenty twenty-three tax five.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'm a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fives?
Who seconded that? Pam? Thank you. And I will make sure that dollar amounts are included in the future. Thank you for that.
Okay, we're going back up there to reports.
Go ahead. No, we don't.
I'll go ahead and read the police report. Had one animal problem, ten business check, two civil disputes, two community policing, one duplicate call, one found property, one illegal burn, one investigation for battery for an adult, one investigate mischief, two investigate thefts, two general investigations, one motor vehicle hit and run, two motor vehicle property damage accidents, one noise disturbance, one peace officer detail, one runaway, one speak with an officer, two special patrols, two suspicious persons, one suspicious vehicle, thirteen traffic stops, two van checks, for a total of fifty-one calls. Anybody got any questions on that? I'll answer them. I will ask you Julie, I forgot about it. Did you have anybody in here about, about a week ago for a solicitor's permit?
No.
They were soliciting, trying to sell sweepers here in town. Cause they came to my house and I ran them out down. But we had to have permit.
Yeah, no, we haven't had anybody. I will let the boys know to keep an eye out.
Yeah, I don't know whether they've ever come back or not, but they did. It's been, like I said, almost two weeks ago now, probably. Fire report?
ALS zero, BLS one fifty-three. Then one nine-one-one run. Then one with Reed. Fire runs two in town, illegal burns, one vehicle accident. Cambridge City one structure and New Lisbon one structure, zero water.
Okay, you don't have anything on building?
No, we did not have any building permits. And other than, uh, Lenny's reports, he did not have any, anything extra tonight.
And we're moving on down to the first report.
Um, you have my fuel report and my time cards. And other than all of the other stuff that we have to do under old and new business, I don't have anything.
Uh, we'll move on down to old business then.
Okay. Um.
Help grant.
The first one, part of the help grant, uh, one of the other programs that they have is the mural, um, program. And, um, Pamela Bliss called today. Um, trying to find a business that has, is very visible. And, um, that the business owner may be interested in, um, participating in the program. Basically, it would be the owner's responsibility to pay to prep the wall. Paint it, seal it, that kind of stuff. Then the artist. Uh, these artists are, it's a contest where, um, they do different murals throughout Wayne County. They will be judged. Um, the owner of the wall has, some say so, but they don't have any say so as far as the creativity, um, that will be used. That's what the artist, that's, that's up to the artist. We are very limited in town. Basically, you guys already did the one that could have been free if you wouldn't have put that one up there so soon. That's the perfect spot, but, um.
What about the music store in town? Think he would be interested?
That is one of them that, um, is on the list.
He's got space on that one side, yeah.
Yeah, um, that is one of them that's on the list. Um.
The library?
The library. Last resort could be the side of the town hall, but because it sits back and we park there, it's, it's not real visible. Um, actually one side, the going east of your business. And another at, at a last resort, cause Dublin Pike is used a lot and not as much as forty, but, um, the only place on Dublin Pike would be our warehouse. And it's a perfect slate, um, just prefer it to be on forty. So, um, I have those that I sent back to, pictures of those that I sent back to Pamela to look at and see, um, what she thinks could work. And then when she says, you know, these, these could work, these won't work, then I'll go reach out. Um, the other one was, um, the Bubble Time Building. They're on East Time. Um.
Bubble Time Building?
The old car dealership.
The old car dealership is down there. She makes the.
Oh.
Um, she makes the bath bombs now.
Oh, didn't know that.
Down there, um, you know where Danny Poole lives, Caddy Corner, that building there. Um, the top half above, um, it's a pretty good slate on top of that. So that's a, that was also an option.
I wish we could do the skating rink. That'd be the most ideal spot.
It would, uh, well, and I even said the side of the concession stand. Um, if she's mentioning Dublin Pike being a well-used side street, that could be an argument on foundry as well. So, um, that is another one that I'll, I'll let her know.
I mean, there's a lot of traffic down there come ball season.
Yes, yes.
Factor that in.
Yeah, and it's not just local traffic when they have their.
Yeah. The only reason they're looking at, at high traffic is because it is a contest. So the more, I, I don't know who votes on these, whether it's just people that happen to be driving by that, that know there's a contest. Uh, but that's why they want them visible for the artists involved. But, um, I will add that one.
I didn't know there was that many artists. I thought Pamela was about the only one there was.
Who did the, the firehouse?
Um, I forget the name, from Louisville.
Oh, he's not from around here?
No, he just moved up here recently.
There's, there's a lot of them around that do, uh, they get into this, um, the contests in different counties and stuff. So they come from all over.
Hey Nathan, it was Keith.
Yeah, Tipton.
Yeah.
That's a lot of, he's, he's the same one that did the Legion and the pub down at Cambridge. That's how we got hold of him.
So I really admire Pam Bliss's work.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she's done a real good job.
I love that one on the side of, uh, the antique store where it looked like it was walking, the lady's walking out onto the sidewalk. Yeah, it was good.
Um, the Blight program, I think we kind of, um, went over that one already. Unless you guys have questions, I'll.
I thought Bob had something to add on that.
Well, I was gonna, if we got to number C, I didn't know whether old business was the Schroder sale, if you want me to talk about it.
Yes, go ahead.
You ready for that?
Sure.
Okay, well, the Schroder lot finally went up for sheriff's sale. And, um, I started the bidding at five thousand dollars and the neighbor then went by a hundred, went to fifty-one hundred. I didn't want to be there all day going a hundred at a time, so I went to fifty-five hundred. And he again said fifty-six, I jumped to six, and then the auctioneer got us going into five hundred increments. So the neighbor went to sixty-five, I went to seven, seventy-five, eight, he went eighty-five. I held my breath and said nine, and Julie was with me, and sure enough, he went to ninety-five hundred. I said, we're done. So he, the neighbor bought it for ninety-five hundred dollars. So it was above what our cap was at nine thousand.
The guy that lives in the house right beside us got the porch on front.
Yes, and he, he did tell me afterwards that he did check on it himself and that, um, the, the ninety-five hundred was about the.
His max.
It was the max and what he said the, uh, value of the property was. So he was.
Part of me was tempted to go ten, see what he said. I didn't want to then come back here and say, well, he bought it for ten, sorry.
And because you can't go, I changed my mind, right?
Yeah, I can't. So we did revise ca- um, c- c- recapitulation of what's going on in here. So because we had, uh, that sheet I passed out last month, just had that at, it's assessed value of seventy-five hundred, well now it's ninety-five hundred. So you see that the total, um, assets applied in this thing were thirty-three thousand three eighty-five forty-nine. The ninety-five hundred dollars actually will get paid directly to us, won't go through the estate. We were the secured creditor that forced the sheriff's sale. So that ninety-five hundred dollars gets paid directly to you, leaving in the estate twenty-three eight eighty-five. Then here are the costs within the estate of eleven thousand four thirty-two. So the balance there that will also come to Dublin is twelve thousand four oh-two for a total of twenty-one thousand nine oh-five eighty-five, which is, I think last time it was like twenty thousand. So just about that two thousand dollars extra that we got on the lot from the assessed value less than what the sheriff's sale costs were. So we will get all of that this month. And, um, you see that it just is about fifty percent of what your total judgment was, but, um, we tried to make something good out of a bad situation. I would, there, I do have a little argument I'm going to have to make with the court. I think we'll be alright. We, of course, filed our claim in the estate, as did Wayne Bank, cause they got burnt on the foreclosure of the house. However, we had gotten our judgment ahead of time, which in my opinion is a judgment lien. Plus the unsafe building statute says, the minute that that court ruled, when Bruce and I went down there, it becomes a lien on all personal property and real estate. So being a secured creditor, we should come ahead of Wayne Bank. And so I don't think they're going to try to make any claim to that twelve thousand. Even if they tried to, because our amount was more than theirs, I did a little calculation. We would have, even on a worst day, we'd get sixty-five percent of that, eight thousand sixty-one. They'd get four thousand three hundred and forty. But I don't think they really have a leg to stand on because of our personal property lien. And so I'm going to write the, um, we, we'll file what's called a petition for insolvent estate, because heirs aren't going to get anything out of this, because all of it's going to claims that were filed against the estate. So we're filing a petition for declaring this as an unsolvable estate and approving the payment of this entire balance to Dublin rather than Wayne Bank. And I don't think there'll be any objection to that, but I just wanted to put you aware that that is a step that we'll be taking this month. And I have a petition here for, um, Julie to sign just regarding the approval of the, the fees. So I think we'll get this whole estate closed up, we'll get our money and move on into two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you for your work on that.
Now, is it the forty-three, what it costs us to tear that all down and clean it up? Is that what?
Yeah, and that also though includes a five thousand dollar penalty, a fee, a, a, a fine that we fined him. It also included my attorney's fees up until that time. So that's how we justified all of the, we also inserted some of the cost for our own local labor people. So that was the most we could get at court when we sued him.
Okay.
And if Wayne Bank wanted to fight that, I would, I would argue then we should have been able to take it up higher than five thousand one dollars for that, for that house.
I know.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to because we were a secured creditor, so.
Anything else in old business?
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. I forgot about that one already. That was just last week.
New business? Annual contract?
Okay, um, we have the renewal of the skating rink community club lease. Just for another year, January of twenty-four through December of twenty-four. In consideration of the aforementioned lease, the lease, he agrees to pay the lease or the sum of one dollar, which we waive. They just, uh, it also shows that, um, which Bob had added this last time, that they agree to take care of the maintenance of the interior. We agree to the maintenance of the exterior. If a third party is required to perform it, the responsibility of such work is negotiated between the two.
I move that we accept the.
Same as last week.
Yeah.
Dublin Community Club lease from, uh, first day of January of twenty twenty-four till December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
You have a motion?
I'll second it. Plus I have a question. Just curious, why do we do it annually and don't make it a longer term?
We just never have?
You know, like a five year or something? I mean, nothing's ever changed, so.
I suppose it keeps their feet to the fire a little bit that if, because if you did a five year and something went awry and you wanted to get out, I'd have to tell you, well, I'm sorry, we can't for another few years. So oftentimes it is safer to do this. I mean, I understand the point, and you absolutely can if you wanted to, but as far as the rationale, that's probably what it was.
I, I think that's, that's good. It doesn't take very long to read through that and approve it.
Have a motion for a second?
Second, then.
Yeah, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next one is, where's this one? Okay. I got these all out of order, sorry. Yeah, that's fine. And then everybody else signs underneath your name.
Everybody underneath here?
Well, the next one on the agenda, I'm kind of out of, out of order, is the rainy day transfers. Uh, that would be resolution R ten dash twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are allowed to transfer ten percent of our taxable budget, uh, unused budget at the end of the year, which was twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. So we have, um, I make the recommendation, um, we did not need to have an election, so we did not have any election expenses this year, as we had exactly enough people to run. The attorney fees, excess, um, CCD improvements, CCD equipment, edit equipment, edit town equipment, edit improvements. And that totals the twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars that will be transferred.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Yes. Uh, now, is that in excess of, because we sold equipment as well? And should that have not o- offset some of the, uh, equipment, town equipment?
This is budgeted amounts that weren't used.
Uh, weren't used, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't understand it.
And what you transfer that back to the general fund then?
It goes back into the rainy day fund.
General fund.
Um, and then the rainy, the rainy day is basically for emergencies and, um.
A little bit of flexibility in it?
Yeah, it, um, for certain things. Now, there are things in the rainy day, um, that we have restricted, like the, if it's restrict, if the fund is restricted, like the MVH, the local roads and streets, those kind of things, what we transfer has to stay restricted. Um, but the other funds are not restricted, so those could be used. Like we used, um, edit funds and rainy day funds when the building fell down, things like that. So it's, it's kind of our, um.
Cushion.
Cushion and safety net, yes.
Alright, I move that we accept resolution number R ten dash two zero two three.
Second.
Have a motion for a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I had one last, um, transfer, end of year transfer between appropriations, just to make sure we had everything caught up, uh, for the year and everything is in, um, the black. And everything is in the black between funds. Everything has to stay in the funds. So if I have one that we use too much, then I have another appropriation within that fund that didn't use as much, we can transfer those between. So that's what these are.
You've got everything where it needs to be to make the auditor happy?
Yes.
Is that another motion or is that just a motion?
Nope, that's another motion.
Another motion.
What's the number on that? I'll make the motion.
R nine dash two thousand, twenty-three.
It's R eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
All right.
Yes, all right.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We already did the R nine. That's the one that we did with Neil. And I have a copy of that for you as well. The last is our encumbrances for next year for stone repair, cemetery stone repair. I haven't gotten a final bill from Gary on the cemetery repairs. He cleans and makes repairs to the cemetery stone.
He's doing all the damage, it has to be repaired.
These are old ones that have just been, he cleans them. And then if they're damaged, broken by weather and that, he, he makes those repairs.
And so we pay him for that?
We don't pay him a salary. He volunteers, but the cost for the supplies and material.
What sum does that come out of?
That comes out of the cemetery fund. And then Dennis Hook, I haven't got anything from him yet on bulldozing. So, and then the rest of that is for the sidewalks and to carry over for our paving next time. I, yeah.
When's the last time you got, you received a receipt from Gary?
I haven't yet.
Oh, not at all?
Not for the year yet, no. So I've gotta, I gotta get with him. I just thought about that today. So I've gotta, I've gotta reach out to get that. That is it on my part.
Okay, we're going down to claims?
On the claims, I had another invoice come in from Western Wayne News for the Waterworks Preservation, preserve their drinking water source and the statement of qualifications that we have to put out as part of this grant project. So I added those. Those two totaled a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. So that brings our claim total up to a hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Can we approve the special ordinance for, can I pray help?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Remember, we talked about the clothing and.
I remember that we made a motion, but we believe it.
Jean made a motion, Pam seconded it.
Gotcha. Sometime when you get really bored, this cold winter day, I would love to have you get real in detail on the frontier bill with the wellhouse. It just seems like we're getting.
It is, it keeps going up.
Drank off big time for no more than what happens out there.
That is something that I need to find somebody that has more knowledge than I do as far as whether we could have something like a VoIP. Is that what it's called?
Voiceover internet?
Um, type, pro, type phone out there. Because my understanding, it had to be landline. And no one else provides landline out there except for frontier.
We might check into that. I know times change and there's really not a whole lot of landlines.
It's not even long distance, is it?
No.
Hundred and thirty dollars for a local call.
Yeah, it has, I think it has unlimited ability because the communication going back and forth and, and it is also considered a fax line. But with the new stuff we have out there, that, that may help too. But I will, I will check with Rob and see what's out there, what, what he feels like were required. Yes, I checked with New Lisbon again because they still don't offer it there. I checked with Xfinity. And I checked, there was another one. And everything else that I checked was the VoIP, however you say that. And I wasn't sure if that's something that we could legally, well, not legally, but safely do because that's what tells us when there's problems at the wellhouse, when the water tower's going down and things like that. So.
Frontier is not reliable whatsoever.
I know. I know, because the last time we went down, I had to argue an entire day to get them to come out because they don't want to come out for a week. And I said, this isn't just a business. I said, this is the health and well-being of everybody in the town. And so it took, it took a lot of, can I speak to your supervisor? To get something done. So yes, I totally understand. And I will continue that.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion, have to accept the claims?
Motion, accept the claims.
Have a second?
It's your last time.
I've done a lot of that. I was going to try to allow you to jump in there. I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second of claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Financials?
Anything out of the ordinary, Julie?
No.
We have a motion to accept financials?
Second.
Yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Who's second?
He made the motion, Jean seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, before we adjourn, and I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for working with me on my strong beliefs that we're here to serve the public and to serve our townspeople. I appreciate the time that I've spent with you. I want to thank the people of Dublin and I just pray that they will continue to be encouraged through the actions of the board with people in mind. The decisions that are being made is for their best interest. I've enjoyed my time here and maybe one of these days I'll be back.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Appreciate your service.
I want to say thank you to you Pam and you Bruce for all the time, the wonderful things and not so wonderful that we've gone through, things that opened our eyes and, and made us think. And working with you both, I believe we are working on celebrating your time on the board. And I will get back with both of you at that point and we'll get that taken care of.
Not expected, but thank you.
No, but that's.
I also would like to thank the board members and the different people, not just this board, but the different board members I've worked with in the past. We've got a lot of, a lot of things done here in Dublin, I believe. Few things disappointing, but for the most part, it was great. I've been on the board eleven years. I've been here in this town, working in this town in Cambridge for, I started out as a town marshal here in Dublin, three years. And then I got hired on the Cambridge City Police Department. I worked there twenty-three years. And also as a school resource officer in Cambridge. And then I've spent eleven, these last eleven years on the boards. And like I say, I really appreciate what we've got done and how hard everybody's worked. Thank you.
With that being said, I'm going to make my last motion. I move we adjourn.
And a Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.